It is possible. Very limited space is also being provided for here at the public, or here at the DAO for the public, utilizing proper medical screening questions and social distancing. Online, public input is encouraged and welcomed. A link for this is located on the district website. Community input, we welcome community input. Written comments from visitors must be information in nature, should address the entire board rather than one particular member, and the Board of Education cannot engage in a discussion or debate in response, but we will take the information to review and obtain answers when appropriate. For tonight's meeting, we received two emails. One's about Orkista, that's been assigned to Lori Posh to reach out to that parent and answer. Second one was about kids in school, and that is elementary, so that's been assigned to Marcia to answer. Next up is our mission statement. Our mission is to provide a safe and caring climate and culture in which we engage, inspire, educate, prepare, and empower all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today and tomorrow's society. Meeting is officially called to order, November 4th, 2020. Some of us are here at the DAO, some of us are remote. Zach, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Just to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
States of America. Public.
And two in the republic.
Which it stands.
One nation.
Justice for all. Thank you, Zach. People, remember to mute your mics when you're not talking, please. Next up will be roll call. Al, could you take roll call, please?
Jeff Polries.
Here.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Here, I am in my home.
Al Dahlgren is here at the district office. Shannon Hawes.
Shannon Hawes here at my home.
Natalie Ringsmith.
I am here, I'm coming to you from my office.
Zach Dorholt.
Present at the DAO.
Les Green.
Remote from cabin.
Also in attendance tonight, at tonight's meeting is Superintendent Willie Jett, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, Dr. Marcia Baish, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Dr. Lori Putnam, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, Lori Pausch, Executive Director of Student Services and Special Education, Carol Potter, Executive Director of Research Evaluation Assessment and Enrollment, Dr. Sylvia Huff, Executive Director of Community Education, Adam Holm, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services, Amy Skellerud, Executive Director of Operations, Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Human Resources, Tracy Flynn-Boe, Director of Community Engagement and Communications, Tammy Deland, Director of Equity Services, Ellen Stewart, Director of Technology, Ryan Cox, and Executive Assistant, Mary Kesterman.
Thank you, Al. Next up is item number one, approval of board meeting and work session agenda. This time, I'm looking for motion to accept tonight's agendas as recorded.
I'm moved.
Is that you, Natalie?
Yes, sir.
I second.
All right, thank you, Les. Al, could you take roll on that, please?
I'm Mr. Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren is yes, Shannon Hawes.
Yep.
Natalie Ringsmith. Yes.
Yes.
Les Green.
Yes.
Jeff Polries.
Yes. All right, thank you, Al. Next up, item number two, consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the board routinely adopts without debate. Any single member of the board may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. The full text of items can be found at the end of the agenda. Tonight, we have item A, approval of personnel staff changes; item B, approval of monthly treasurer's report for September 2020; item C, approval of monthly financial report for September 2020; item D, proposed revised board policy number 414, mandatory reporting, it's up for a third reading; item E, proposed revised board policy number 806, crisis management, it's also up for a third reading. And I will be recusing myself from item A, but I'll vote on everything else. I'm looking for motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
So, we have a motion to take item A off the agenda. We need to take item A off the agenda so you can vote, so you can recuse yourself of it, which is the consent agenda.
I'm not taking item A off, I'm voting for everything but item A. So on item A, I'm recusing. Everything else, I'm good on.
I'm sorry, put in order, Chair, we need two motions of that. We need two motions to be able to vote separate in a consent agenda.
We're not voting separately, Monica. I'm recusing myself from item A.
Okay, whatever, here's the chair.
Thanks, Monica. All right. Any other discussion? Al, could you take roll, please?
Do we have motion or second?
We...
Second.
Looking for, all right, who motioned it?
Maybe Monica just had, Monica just had a question. I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Then I'll second.
Then I'm looking, and Shannon second it? Okay, all right, now, Al, we're good to go.
Turn your mic on, Al.
I'm working on it.
She's getting there.
Oh, okay.
Shannon Hawes.
Yeah.
Natalie Ringsmith.
Yes.
Zach Dorholt.
Yes.
Les Green.
Yes.
Jeff Polries.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren is yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is our discussion and action items. Item A is our school closing plan, flexible learning days, going to be presented by Tracy Flynn-Boe, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Jeff, can I have a point of order before we go there?
Sure, go ahead.
On what Monica was saying and looking it up here, what we need to do for consent agenda is we have to vote on the thing that's being taken out separately. It says removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the Assembly. So I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing here.
I didn't hear that we removed anything. Jeff didn't remove it from the consent agenda, he removed himself from the voting on that item. I would say, I would differ with that, but...
So the vote would reflect 100% on everything, and on A, I just recused on A.
So the minutes would show that the consent agenda was approved, but item A, Jeff, was recused. And that's, that's what we're looking for in that anyway.
So, yes, I understand what you are saying, and it makes all sense to me and to everybody what you're saying. However, that is different of what parliamentary procedure asks you to do, and if you look at the notice and you think that this is parliamentary procedure, it will be confusing. In order to recuse a person out of one part of the vote, you need to make a different motion, that's what we are taking. However, well, we are not necessarily following that, and as I said, the chair is the chair. So that was my point of order, and if you want it put it this way, is the way, it is not the way that the procedure should be if we are following parliamentary procedure.
Mr. Chair, can we just look into that for the next time to make sure we're doing it correctly?
Let's get, let's just get it on record, I recused myself for the entire consent agenda. Then it would be cleaner, correct, Monica?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That is correct.
Does that make sense? Okay. Mary, can you let the records reflect that, then? I just recused myself for the entire consent agenda, to keep it simpler. All right. Tracy, sorry about the interruption, go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Okay, so, good evening, Chair Polries, Board Member Superintendent Jett. This evening, we have the, in front of the board, the flexible learning plan for school closing days. This plan is required by Minnesota Statute 128.414, which allows for the school board to authorize flexible learning days or a remote learning day, in essence, for days that otherwise would be closed due to weather. And so the type of weather closings we typically have in a school year are either for snow or ice, or for severe cold weather, and in any of those cases, we would be using this flexible learning plan. If you look at the beginning of this plan, it talks about the makeup plan. The school district approved a plan last year as well, and last year was the first year we were piloting the flexible learning days. The difference between last year and this year is last year, the first three days of weather closings were handled in the more traditional way where the superintendent might recommend a school closing day for all staff and for all students, and we then, in the last year's plan, said that the next five days would be flexible learning days. This year, because we've had great experience with our distance learning and because all of our students now have devices from pre-K up to grade 12, we're fully prepared for flexible learning days, and so the first five weather closing days will be flexible learning days as allowed by the statute. And so, without going through all the details of the plan, this is the same plan in large part that we used last year, where you see changes in student expectations, it's because we've gotten better again, particularly at the preschool and K-5 level, using the learning platform of Seesaw and the devices, whereas last year, we were sending home people. This year, we're able to continue that learning using the digital world, and so you see those changes there. The licensed staff expectations are here as well, and they just really are talking about the, you know, the corollary, what students will be doing and what teachers will be doing. The third page of this document outlines what will happen for our non-licensed staff. Currently, all of our bargaining agreements are triggered off the teacher's workday. So, for school closing days in the past, if the, if the school board declared a school closing day and teachers were not working during that school closing day and were not required to make it up, then all staff would be paid and not required to make it up, whereas if teachers were required to teach or to make it up, then the staff had to work, you know, on those days as well. And so what we've been able to do, again, because we've been practicing lots of remote learning and working in the last year, we're able to keep most of our 10-month, our school-based staff, working even on those remote flexible learning days. So you'll see in the 10-month non-licensed staff expectations that, number one, any staff that are supporting distance learning is part of their assignment, because they are a paraprofessional, or a behavior support staff, or one of our members of our bilingual communication support staff, they'll continue to work with students remotely during those days from home. We also have non-instructional staff, which could be clerical staff, health paras, clerical paras, interpreters. Those staff also can work from home effectively, and we've learned that in the past several months as we've been working with the work-at-home restrictions. And then the third group of non-licensed staff that are there are staff that don't support instruction and whose work can't be performed at home. The best examples of that would be our bus drivers and our nutritional services staff. For those staff, on a closed day, they can either use their accumulative leave or other paid leave options available to be paid for that day, or in the alternative, they could request a non-paid day and also request makeup time. And what we will be able to do through that request coming through the Skyward Employee Time Off System, is be able to track all of those employees that are interested in makeup time, and then together, we'll evaluate how many staff we have and what, what categories of staff are available, and we will provide makeup work for staff that are in that group. So that's our 10-month staff. Moving down in the document, it talks about our 12-month staff. For our 12-month staff, this is largely staff that work at the DAO. It may be our non-represented group, employee group, it could be our clerical group, or it could be our custodial employees. For our clerical employees and most of our other 12-month staff that work at the DAO or at the DSB, those staff really are able to work remotely from home again, and so, again, this language provides for those staff to be able to work at home with the authorization of their supervisors. If they can't work from home, or they choose not to work from home, they also have the option of making up the hours by working additional hours during the week that the school closing occurs, or on Saturday of that week. And so the 12-month staff should not have to lose any time or pay, and should be able to make up any time if they choose not to work on the, on their school closing day. The last paragraph just talks about a school closing day that might be due to just extreme cold weather, and we know there's a difference between those cold weather days and the snow days. On snow days, we don't want any of our staff traveling to work because of safety issues, but on a cold weather day, while we wouldn't want to be running buses and have children at bus stops, we certainly could have many of our staff traveling safely to school in their vehicles, and so you'll see in that paragraph that our custodial and engineering staff would report to work as usual on a cold weather day, and so that they can continue to monitor our buildings. Engineers have to be in buildings during cold days anyway to make required building checks, and those staff should be able to safely report to work. So that is our flexible learning plan. The last page of the document is just a copy of the statute that provides that the board must review this plan at the start of each school year and approve it before we have any of these weather closing days. It requires us to have collaborated with our teachers bargaining unit, which we have done, and in fact, in the last week, we have met with each of our bargaining units to review how the plan would impact their members, and everyone agrees that the plan works for their bargaining units. So, I will go back to you, Chair Polries, and the board needs to approve this plan
I would like to make a motion.
Thank you, sorry, it's on mute. Thank you, Monica, thank you, Natalie. Before we call a vote, I'd like to thank you, Monica and Natalie, for giving that input on recusing, because I also have to recuse myself from this one, because my wife works for the district, and this will directly affect my house. So, with that being said, any other discussion? Al, would you take roll on this matter, please? And I am recusing myself.
Before we take roll, that was actually Shannon.
Click on the far bottom, and it should pop up. Far control D. Was it Shannon?
Did you hear me?
Okay.
It was Shannon, yeah. I mean, I like Shannon, so that's okay.
Yeah. He's still working on his mic. I'm getting a ton of reverb tonight, so I'm struggling to see who said what.
So, what are we doing right now?
Al, seven seconds. I think Zach's gonna take over. We're good. Just read the names, Zach, and we'll say yes or no. You're ba, yeah, roll call.
Les Green.
Yes.
Zach Dorholt, yes. Natalie Ringsmith.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
And Jeff Polries.
Yes. All right, enough of that painful thing. Next, we are going on to item number four, reports, Board of Education reports. First up, if she has one, is Board Development Policy and Governance Committee, Chair Shannon Hawes. Do you have a report, Shannon?
I do, I have to pull it up here, hold on.
Do you need time?
Just one second here.
Okay.
So, we met this past Thursday, hopefully that was October 27th. We reviewed policy 495, 740, 522, 413, all these policies are going to be coming forward here. We also looked at the school closing plan that we just reviewed and voted on, and finally, then, had a discussion about a typical annual board retreat in December, and we decided not to recommend retreats, that we will skip it this year. We had that discussion prior to elections, and so, as we all know, we're not going to have much of a changeover in the board, and I think our new member will be Scott, who will be an easy onboarding, as he comes to many meetings and has a really good idea of this, but we'll make sure if he needs to reach out to different organizations that he'll do that. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Really, you're okay with that? You'll make sure people reach out to Scott and invite him in for a one-on-ones?
Yes, sir. Could you hear me?
Thanks. All right. Yeah, thank you, Will. Okay, there is none from finance. Zach, you have a legislative committee report?
No report, other than we'll be reviewing the legislative makeup and AMSD stuff at next meeting, which I'll call as soon as we get some additional details.
So nothing for tonight?
Nothing for tonight.
Next up would be Personnel and Negotiations Committee, it's Les Green for chair. Les, do you have a report for us, please?
I gotta make, yes, I do. Today, we met this morning from 10 to 12. Tracy presented the flexible learning plan for weather closing days. We reviewed that this evening, and additionally, had an update on personnel and data related to COVID-19 absences, quarantine, and school closing decisions. We reviewed board policies 522 and 413 related to Title IX procedures, and that will be coming to the board at some point. And then we, again, talked about superintendent evaluation procedures and process, and that's the report. Anything else, Monica or Natalie?
Just a point of reference about the closed session for superintendent board reports, I don't think that has been publicly announced, and I don't know when I see something about that.
Yeah, the closed session for the evaluation of Superintendent Jett will be on the 13th of November, do I have it right? Okay, and a time, give me the time, Monica.
So, we do have, we have come back to meeting that day, so I think, just to add to the agenda, the closed session, so there will be a 13.
Right.
All right, next up...
So that's the report.
Thank you, Les, thank you, Monica. Next up is Achievement Integration Equity Committee, Chair Natalie Smith, do you have a report for us, Natalie?
No, sir, I did that last time, but thank you for checking.
All right, thank you. All right, the time is 6:54. We will adjourn tonight's school board meeting and move into our work session. On tonight's work session, we have five items. First up, item number one is Equity Services.
Okay, thank you, I'm waiting for Ryan.
Your mic's still muted.
Is it? Okay, oh, here we go.
Ryan, you good?
Am I still muted?
Yep.
Okay.
Something in the air.
Right.
Helen, you good?
You can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, good evening, Superintendent Jett, Chair Polries, and members of the board. My name is Ellen Stewart, Director of Equity Services. You can change it, Brian, okay. Also online this evening, we have Lacy Locken, Supervisor of American Indian and Equity Services, Henry Galloway, Coordinator, Academic Achievement and Support, Ahmed Abi, Lead Bilingual Communication Support Specialist. We are excited to share with you current and future programming from the Equity Department. Next slide, please, there we go. Here is the District 742 mission, and it was read earlier today, and what I'd like to point out is that embedded in the district mission is the focus of the Equity Department in supporting all learners. Next slide. What is equity? Ken Williams, leading authority on equity and school culture, summarizes equity in this way. He says, "Equity should be a part of the DNA of every school culture, every district culture, because the quest is to provide every student with what they need, when they need it, with urgency to ensure equity, excellence, and achievement for all students." Next slide. Here is an illustration of the difference between equality and equity. Okay? Equality, go ahead and click one more time, Ryan. Okay, there, thank you. Equality is providing everyone with the same thing to accomplish a goal. As you can see, providing the same bicycle to all four people benefits only one person, the third person. Next slide, click. Thank you. However, equity is providing everyone with what they need to accomplish a goal. Access to whatever accommodation is needed benefits each individual. Equity is a set of practices combined with a specific mindset to bring about the culture of learning for all students regardless of background. Next slide. Distance learning in the Equity Department, it has been impacted in a number of ways. I hear an echo. Okay. It's an increase in needs for interpretation and translation services. Our student groups are meeting exclusively virtually, which has impacted attendance at groups, and community programming has been modified from in-person support to virtual. Next slide. The Equity Department could not meet the needs of all students in isolation, which is too small. However, collaboration with schools and departments ensures that all students are being provided what is necessary to achieve academic success. A few examples, in the Communications Department, there's translation and interpreting services, community ed, community outreach with parents, English language learners, supports for our students and families, human resources, in addition to professional development, retention of staff of color, learning and teaching, professional development, curriculum and instruction, student services, students with academic or physical disabilities, and technology, support for computers and online programs. Next slide. Equity Department facilitates programming for district leaderships on topics that will have an immediate impact on student success. That includes year-long Equity Professional Development Plan, secondary and elementary administration professional development, and presentations at district meetings. Next slide. Equity support for licensed and non-licensed staff, five-year professional development plan, asynchronous professional development courses, affinity groups as part of the Achievement and Integration Plan in World's Best Workforce, and culturally responsive teaching. Next slide. The Equity Department has created several things to support our families. That includes translator devices for each school building, cell phones for our BCSS and EEOCs for direct contact, contracted consultants in three service agencies for translation and interpretation services, technology-trained BCSS and EEOCs, and parent technology support. Next slide. More things to support families and students includes student athlete seminars... More things to support families and students includes student athlete seminars, community parent groups, uh, American Indian, Latinx, and Somali, Somali TV and radio appearance by Superintendent, nurse, mental health services in the community. Next slide. Through collaboration with district departments, Equity is able to extend support to the academic access of all students. We have Avid, CRT again, cultural responsive teaching, talent development, Equity staff trained in techno- technology support, student groups, and social emotional learning. Technology supports and homework hubs are in its infancy stage. We would, we anticipate that both will be up and running starting this Saturday. Next slide. Okay. Oh, go back one. It should be a video. Oh, no video. Okay. Ryan, there's not a click for a video on there? So um, we uh we have a um, a video of us, of current student from Roosevelt who has uh talked, who's talking about the impact that the Equity Department has had on his um growth and maturation, growth and maturation. Um, but it's not coming through for some reason. Let me see. I'm gonna try one last thing. Um, here we go. Okay, nope, Ryan, you you can't. Did you just text me? I think you did. Okay, yep, no, it's okay. The the video is not embedded. So unfortunately, we won't see the uh, the video. Um, but I will uh turn it over to Henry and uh Lacy to discuss what the video was about. And the student, Lacy, Henry?
Okay, uh, this is Henry. Well, we were cha-challenged with the um the opportunity to make a video about student voices. So I contacted a young man from the Roosevelt uh Learning Center to talk about his experience in Heroes Group. Uh, and he wrote a really nice presentation uh about the Heroes Group and his, how it's impacted his life. Uh, he talked about the acronym for Heroes, which is HART, Education, four Rs, Respect, Responsibility, Rules, and Resiliency. And the O is for the offseason. He basically talked about how that impacted him and how he, through the three years of attending the Heroes Group, has made some changes in his life. And it was really a nice video that Ryan put together that I really wish we could have shared.
Okay, Lacy, do you want to add anything? I know he was one of your students, too.
All right, um, good evening, everyone. Um, I would just add that uh to see just the student himself doing what he did and um be willing and brave to make a video was his biggest celebration ever. And those who knew him, Henry and I, were so excited because um he's always been just generally a very shy, reserved um young man. And he, so the opportunity was cool that he was highlighted in what he had gained. But to see him actually do it and want to do it was fantastic. So anyway, I just, that's why I would add, we're very proud of him.
Mr. Chair, we can put that on for the next meeting, can't we? The video?
Yeah.
Yes, we can. Or, or we can also uh Dr. Green and Chair Polries, or we can also um attach the video after this presentation and send it to the board. So whatever the board would wish, we can send it to the board separately, or we can bring it to the next meeting also.
I, I'd like it to be I just, I think it's, I'd like it to be in the regular meeting process so that the young man recognizes that we think it's important enough to put him on television. So, and I'd, and the, either way, but I, I mean, no, both is okay, but one is, I think, that.
We'll take care of it.
Okay. Ryan, I did send it to you separately. Were you able to get that? If not, we can just go ahead and move on. There's no volume. Technology, you gotta love it.
Possibility rules, respect, resilience, and obviously, the groups were very informative and fun. I learned a lot about myself and others while attending the groups. I felt comfortable enough to express my true feelings. I also learned how to prepare and to be successful in school and in life. And in my option, I think more males would benefit more from attending. And I feel like Hero has shown me a lot of, you know, like just having a voice, having someone there to listen to you. Um, and just, you know, sometimes people feel like they don't have that. But Hero has really truly helped me understand and become a better student in school.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ryan. And that is the conclusion of um the Equity Department Report. Uh, want to thank you, and if there's any questions, um, I will take them now.
Mr. Chair? The um
I'm back in for the fifth time. Go ahead.
Um
Go ahead, Les.
Uh, the uh, the definition, the equity, the 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 presentation about equity, um, can we get that in written form? I I thought it was very good, and uh I just, I'd like to study it a little more.
So, Dr. Green, what I thought I heard you ask is, can we, can the board get this presentation in written form? And so, Ellen, that's what Dr. Green is asking you.
Just that definition of equity and the, and the slide that, that those, a couple of, I guess the uh Ellen's words went a little deeper than uh
Okay.
than the slides would present, so.
Yes, I I can get that to you.
But could, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any other questions? And like I said before, I have Henry, Lacy, and Ahmed online, too. If they, if you have any questions about any specific programming from student groups to our translating services or American Indian um education program. Monica? You have a question?
So uh, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very sweet and short. So I wanna, I'm I'm so used to 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 have long presentations. So I'm gonna have Lacy and Henry, I'm just gonna take the opportunity that you're here. And I'd really like to hear about your experiences with um eh parents' groups and with the students' groups. So uh, I think that both of you are taking different groups. I'm I'm not sure. But um, but but if you can tell me, um, I'm interested in learning about what are you doing with the parents' groups? Let's separate the questions. Let's do that first.
All right, um, I will take that. So um, for our parent groups, right now, we're just uh hosting them virtually. And we are just trying to connect with our um parents in a lot of different ways, like trying to invite them in different ways, you know, doing mass invitations, but also using um relationships that we have built. Um, and then having them invite people to our meetings as well. Because, you know, I think, for me, anyway, um, I I think that keeping the connection, like the human connection, is really a challenge through this distance learning process. And so we're really working to try to, you know, foster that and then make the groups sort of a space where um parents feel supported. So it's not just like an informational sharing group. It's more of like coming together and being able to like talk about what's going right, what's not going right, what do we need more support with? And then they also can have an opportunity to, you know, grow community within, you know, the district as well, meeting new people across um buildings, which we wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity to before as easily as distance learning. So um, I don't know if I answered the question or if you need more information? Or maybe I shouldn't have asked that open question.
Yeah, no, no, don't worry. We're good. And I I like to hear about the 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 youth groups and what are you doing in in times of COVID and distance learning and and those kind of things? So you have several groups. And if you can just kind of give me a rundown of the groups that you have and take one as an example to tell me a little bit about it.
Okay, I can take that. I think I can take that one. Okay, um, first of all, during uh COVID, um, I was really not able to get connected with a lot of students virtually. So I sh- I made the 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 groups out of just information. So when we got information about COVID and what the district was doing and how to prepare yourself for COVID, I was getting that information out to students. And I got a lot of um questions about it. So I basically used it as a resource for students to get information about uh COVID-19. But uh, one of my, the first group that we created uh in the district at the Equity Department was the African-American um Female Leadership Group. And I like to tell this story because it involved Willie. When I first came to the Equity Department, uh Willie brought a young lady to the Equity Department about three years ago. I think he started three or four years ago. And she came to him with concerns about not seeing a lot of females in the building that looked like her. So Willie brought her to the Equity Department. It was African-American female. And he brought her to the ec- Equity Department. And it's, and um, she told her story to us, how she felt in the building, which was predominantly white females and not uh any African-American females, and how she felt like um we need to try to do something about it. So as a result, we created the African-American Girls Leadership Group. And it's a group where we invite um various uh women of color, black women, um, to come and speak to the girls on various topics. And since that um, since that first time, the group has been one of the most popular groups. And we had some really nice people, women, that came in to talk to um uh, to the girls. And some of the ladies that uh came in had family that were basketball players for the U and playing professional basketball. Now Willie's shaking his head. Now he remembers. I brought her in and she said, is Willie Jet here? And I said, we need to schedule a meeting to meet with him. She said, I don't. Where's his office at? And from the, she just went and Bogarted, basically. Woman, Willie out. So, but the girls really like the group. And it's going uh one of the most popular groups that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one more thing. What what grades are the, is that group on?
Well, the African-American Girls Leadership Group is on the uh middle school level and high school level. But we do have uh Mufasa, that's on the elementary, uh, excuse me. That's um also a boys' group for um sixth through eighth grade. Mufasa is based on Lion King. And it talks about uh Mufasa, the king of the pride, and how we should be proud. We also have a key um elementary level group called Keeping It Real. And then we have Heroes and uh uh African-American Girls Leadership on the high school level. Hi.
Hi, I was actually raising my hand, too.
I know, I know. I was just messing with you.
I, okay. It would be nice to to uh, over some period of time, to see if we could attach academic performance or or measure academic performance and participation in the groups and see if it does have any impact on that. Uh, both academic and in a behavior, too. I think that would be a good item that would um of illustration.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm certain it does.
Mm-hmm. I think at one time, um, one of your colleagues, Dr. Johnson, was doing a um um, I forgot what, demonstration research on access-like and non-access-like students.
Mm-hmm.
And him and I had talked about doing something with the group to see how the social and emotional groups had an impact on student achievement.
Mm-hmm.
But we haven't went any further with it.
I think it would be a very good thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the Equity Department or the Equity Team? Hi, Monica.
Lieutenant Jack, can we get that video emailed to us? Uh, my internet here isn't the best, so it was stopping a little bit for me.
So Ellen, you heard that request. Ellen and Ryan, please send that to the board. Thank you.
I think that Al is trying to get in, but we cannot hear him.
Al, you're muted. Sorry.
There we go. So the question was whether or not the district Equity Team, uh, Leadership Team was meeting. Is that correct, Al?
Yeah, we're still meeting regularly.
Yeah, um, we have not uh composed that group just as of yet. Um, what we were working on was trying to make sure that it was uh matching up with how we can best support our families from um, from distance learning, for distance learning.
It's gone. All right.
Oh. We can hear you now.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ryan, the thing that, it disappears. It's it's gone.
Gotcha. So to to answer your question in short term, we have not met yet. Um, but we are, that is something that we're planning for the month of November and moving forward. We changed our goals and missions as to what um Delt will be doing. One of the focus, what we're moving our focus to is um looking more at academic and um curriculum success for our students more than just the SCL component. So we spent a lot of time working on that.
Has there been, uh, kind of along the same train of thought, has there been any um effort lately put into the student equity leadership teams? We used to have them at Apollo and Tech.
So that would be, that would be from Henry and Lacy, if you guys could update um Al on that?
Yes, um, we are having those this year, and we're just in the process of formulating um how we can recruit our students because it's a little bit challenging this year. Um, because, you know, we have to reach out virtually and word of mouth. So we're trying to up our game a little bit on how we can get students engaged and want to participate. But we will be having those this year from Tech and Apollo and McKinley.
I have a more question. So I'm just gonna jump in. Um, so um, I I kind of along with the question that Les had about attaching academic achievement. I'm also interested to learn, to have a little bit more data on on the work that you're doing. So I I I wanted to know things like um, what is the population of the students of color that we have participated in these groups? And eh, from what schools? Um, and how are we developing our outreach strategies to make sure that the students are participating? Yeah, or that we are not having like two students that participate in every single group? And then we have students that don't know participate in any of the groups? So I'm interested in 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 learning about that and knowing about that. I'm not sure that needs to be a presentation for the board, but I would like to have that information.
Ellen, and so Monica, I'm looking, Ellen shake her head saying yes? And she can make sure that she responds to the entire board with that information.
Yep. So uh, in addition, it's what I heard the board So, uh, in addition, it's what I heard the board say is there's basically, you want the population of student participation in groups. We also want data from the students that are participating in groups, their academic and behavior, uh, data for the impact that the groups are having on, on, uh, our students that are participating.
And also what schools they are, are from. That's what I heard Monica say.
Okay, yeah. And, and I also wanted to discriminate, like when you're telling me that Heroes has 20 students, I don't know how many students they have, but the other one has, uh, the other 20 students. I do wanna know if they are the same students or if they are different.
Okay.
Ellen, I have one more question. Do, does GLTBIQ fall under this at all? Under this department, or is that all handled in all of those programs and initiatives handled in other departments?
I didn't hear what, what you said. What, what program?
Uh, GLTBIQ program.
LGBT.
Or LG.
Yeah, nope. Yep, um, oh, my, oh, no. Um, we do a fraction of that. We support the efforts, but, um, as far as us running, uh, a specific group, I'm gonna defer to Lacey. Um, because my understanding is that there, it was getting, it was taking off at the end of the, of last year um, to make sure we had supports for our students. Um, but as far as a, a group specifically coming out of Equity at this time, I think that is something that is still in motion. Um, Lacey, can you chime in?
Um, I would just add that, um, the focus groups that happened, that Dr. Huff and Dr. Putnam, and I'm not sure who else was involved in that, but, um, gathering the data from a lot of our students about needs and concerns, and I think it was presented a couple meetings ago to the school board. Um, so that information is what can help guide us, but as of right now, we don't have any structured pieces in place other than what's offered at the building levels. So those supports would be specific to buildings right now.
Willie, would you have any more information on that? I mean, we have a real high suicide rate group. And they need a lot of support, or they need supports in place. And if it isn't being handled in the Equity Department fully, what, where are we taking care of those needs?
So if, Al, to address that, so first I want to reiterate what Lacey talked about in terms of the student surveys that her and Dr. Huff and some others, um, did within this past year. What you just said, Al, was part of the reason to have the surveys, trying to make sure that we could hear students' voice and understand that. So we did not, at that time, we did not have a district, it wasn't district-focused, okay? What it has been is if you're in the school buildings, you would hear the counseling staff within each building. So at Tech, they do their wraparound. At Apollo, they do their wraparound. At South, at, at North, and at McKinley. And so that's where it's been done in the past, and, and it's, uh, and it's been by, uh, by need. One of the things that the survey let us know last year in terms of doing, getting the voice, and like you said, there's a need, is we need to now have a district-wide overview of that. And that is what we're trying to accomplish. But one of the very first things was last year, that survey, because we recognized that need, and students were coming to us and asking and requesting that.
And Al, I want to say too, that that's something that's an ongoing discussion in, um, the Achievement Equity and Integration Committee as well, um, with Dr. Putnam and myself and the other folks on that team. I think we're, we're continuously, um, you know, that's a, it's a journey that we're on, and we want to continue that journey instead of, of course, letting that die. So maybe Dr. Putnam, if you wanted to say anything about next steps there?
Can I ask, um, Dr. Putnam, being that she's the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary, she also has some ideas in terms of she can, not ideas, she has more of an inner working at, especially at the high schools. And so if you can ans- answer Natalie's question, but also give some more insights in terms of what you know is going on?
I'm sure. I'd be happy to. Um, we have, um, very active GSAs, um, at all three of our high schools, um, McKinley, Apollo, and Tech. Um, and they are, um, the advisors are, um, well-trained and well-prepared, um, and partner closely with our counselors, um, to meet the, um, unique social, emotional needs of our, and, um, students who are attending the GSAs. Um, so they have thrived, um, even on distance learning. Um, and so it's been really neat to see how, um, effective, um, our advisors and our students, because our students are also leading that work, um, are able to be even in our, um, remote or, or setting where we're not face-to-face. Um, in terms of next steps for, um, our district, and that is a conversation that's still continuing. I know that we need to, um, based on the feedback from our students, uh, who did this survey, um, that we, uh, need to start to extend that work down into our middle schools. That was a, a, a space where, um, students were saying they wish they had had some additional support. Um, and I think that that might speak to Al's, um, concern if we are able to wrap around a little more, um, tightly, um, and consistently earlier. Um, that has not happened, um, at this point, uh, you know, we had, what, three weeks with our kids, with our students, uh, prior. And so to launch something like that virtually at this point is a challenge, but it is not something that we have last sight of.
I have a question too. Not sure what's going on here.
Because Jeff got dropped again. Oh, he's back.
Jeff got it. Jeff just got a new computer, so hopefully that'll get fired up and he'll be back at it. Um, so my question, um, looking over at Ellen, uh, and for, um, maybe Dr. Huff too. So from what I understand, it's, is a concept of equity and climate being very intertwined. Can't have one without the other, the relationship. And just, uh, basic, I guess the basic question is, to, to what extent are, are climate surveys and data going to be intertwined with the equity work? And is, is there a formal, uh, process within that right now? Um, like I said before, I'm just kind of maybe of that concept that those are one in the same quite often, more often than not.
Yes, currently, when we report out our climate survey results, I provide the results to the Equity Department, broken out by race, um, for our students and parents, um, respondents that took part. Um, we also heard from our students during last year's GSA focus groups concerns around questions in terms of the items that ask students to identify their gender. And so having continued conversations in terms of what those options should look like and making sure that they're inclusive. So that way, that information could then also be shared with the Equity Department and disaggregated by those different identifiers to look and see how our students are being differentially impacted throughout the district. So that part of it is in progress, but we do already currently provide data broken out by, um, students' race and ethnic demographics.
All right.
Can I ask one more question on that, Jeff?
Oh, please do.
Thank you. I, I think, um, I mean, it's a lot to, the Equity Department is very small. Um, you know, and you guys do so much already. But, um, and I know we're not gonna solve this tonight, but I'm just wondering if at some point we can talk about where in the grand scheme of things, does our, where, where does our LGBTQ students fit? Is it fit in Equity? You know, and should, should that be a focus of the Equity Group, or, or, you know, is it that it's enough to have Dr. Putnam be, um, thinking about that and actively doing that with Dr. Huff and, and other folks? Um, you know, I think when we, when we see the, the Minnesota survey, and like Al was mentioning, um, our LGBTQ students um, really have high suicide rates and self-harm and, um, mental health issues. And so, um, you know, acknowledging that, and, uh, we are moving forward with it, but just making that a little bit more of a sustainable. I don't know exactly what I'm trying to say, but maybe we can just think a little bit bigger on that, so we make sure that has a home.
Yes, thank you for that, um, Natalie. And, you know, what I said in my, my presentation, and, and I just want to reiterate it, is that um, the Equity Department, in order for us to be successful and to meet, uh, the varying needs of, of our students in the school districts, is that we do a lot of collaboration um, with schools and with, um, uh, different programs, different, uh, district departments. And so, um, I, your point is well-taken. And I think about, um, you know, that we are involved with the high schools that currently have a GSA programming. Um, so even though it's not technically out of the Equity Department, we always provide supports for any of those groups that pop up uh, in, in the school based on, on the varying needs.
I would like to add one thing to that. And so the, the question becomes, um, how do you support it? And support can be funding, supports can be people, supports can be, can look and take place in many different ways. What I think, one of the things that we always continue or strive to do in this district is to figure out how to take care of all of our students' basic need. That's part of our strategic plan. It's part of our mission. It's part of our vision. And so in doing that, um, survey last spring, there was a reason that we did the survey. Because we knew that there was this need. We, we're talking to students. With that being said, now it's time to, to implement. It's time to take action with that. And so now that we've taken the survey, that we're having the conversations, that we're recognizing there's a need, we are figuring out how to support that. We are figuring out how to allocate funds for that. So when, when Ellen says that she, when she said there's not a specific place, I don't think she was technically trying to say that. What I believe she is trying to say is, we are figuring out how to support that through the Equity Department, through our Learning and Teaching Department, through our entire district. If you're sitting in our cabinet meeting, Equity is part of our entire fabric. So you're, you're talking about that a, and with our finance department. We're having that con- conversation as a cabinet, at cabinet level. And so there is a place for it. There is a home for it, and it's called District 742. That, that's the bottom line as relates to Equity. It's written in our mission statement. And so we are figuring that out. Do we have it solved yet? Nope. But there's many other things that have happened over the years that all of a sudden we've recognized that there's a need, and then we address it, and here is one of them. And I have the ultimate confidence and faith as I'm looking at the screen A of the Equity Department, because they are fabulous and they work wonders. But I also, I'm looking at the board. And so the board members that are sitting here recognize that need and have concerns about that. And so when we bring this to you as an administration, saying, here's some thoughts, here's some suggestions, here's our recommendation, that is something I feel confident in, i- in terms of being supported that way.
Thank you, Willie. Is there any other questions or discussion? Okay. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Lacey. Thank you, Henry, if you still out there. Appreciate it. Next up, item number two, school updates, activity updates, and COVID update. It's gonna be by Dr. Marcia Vaish, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, and Willie Jett, Superintendent of District 742.
Good evening, Chair Polaris, Superintendent Jett, members of the board and community members joining us this evening via live stream. Uh, we are very excited to share with you our school update for this evening. Here you see some lovely Talahe students who are wearing orange for National Unity Day on October 21st to demonstrate their stand together against bullying and that they are united for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Here you see a photo of the Talahe Fit Club. Talahe has teacher-led recess for students to move their bodies and get their wiggles out. This year, with a focus on health and safety of students, they have a movement rotation that allows students to visit both of Talahe's playgrounds, their new bank shot basketball court, and the Talahe Fit Club one time a week. Having these travel short sessions allows for only one class in a rotation at a time. The club, as the kids call it, has a large projector and socially-distanced dots on the floor for students to move and groove with the music. Principal Hanson put together a quick link page for students and teachers to access their favorite body break videos. It has been a huge hit. Talahe students have also been working hard to increase their reading skill throughout the first months of school. And here you see a beautiful child who is building her reading stamina during read-to-self time. School materials were sent home with students, even though they are learning at home, such as Fridays or on hybrid days. These were supplies that are important for learning, but that were not included on the school supply list. There are additional supplies that are coming for students to use for learning on their at-home days, including a variety of math manipulatives such as counters, pattern blocks, base ten blocks, and Unifix cubes. This is a short video clip of a student sharing with his teacher how he plans to use the supplies that he received.
I can use the pencils to draw, and I can use the eraser to erase the things that I mess up with the pencils. I can use the pencil sharpener to sharpen the colored pencils. To see how wrong these stuff is. And I can use the car to play a game with my mom. And I can use the ice to play a game with my mom too. I did all of it, cause I had a great idea for all of it.
So I thought you might enjoy the enthusiasm that, that children have when they receive those supplies for at-home learning. And as I stated, they'll get a second round of supplies, uh, that will include more math manipulatives. This slide shows a couple of teachers who are instructing their students remotely. Teachers are doing a phenomenal job of teaching from a distance to their students when they haven't been able to be physically present in their classrooms. Okay, Ryan, you can go to the next slide. Here you see Ms. Mathison, the media specialist at Discovery, teaching kindergarten students coding with Coding Go Mouse. This was an addition coding app, a math activity. Students were coding the robot to the sums of the numbers on the mat that you see in front of the teacher. Students absolutely love their media time. Pizza with the principal at Discovery is a PBIS incentive for Student of the Month. Students are chosen by classroom teachers for exhibiting safe, responsible, and respectful behavior. The students get a pizza lunch with the principal and a certificate to take home. And all in a day's work. Discovery Principal Becky Estrada rescued a duck trapped in their center courtyard. The duck could not fly, and with the recent snow about a week ago, was in danger of fleeing to death. When the duck was discovered in the courtyard, she stated in a matter-of-fact way, I can catch him. Let's do this. So Principal Estrada did just that. She brought the little guy into the school building for a bit, and the students were enthralled with the duck. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Polaris, members of the Board of Education. It's hard to follow the duck rescue, but I'll give it my best effort. Uh, this evening, I'd like to talk with you about some of the ways that our secondary schools are adapting and overcoming and creating new. So here, uh, this is a, a couple of photos from South. Um, and they're on the left, uh, this is a lesson of, uh, sixth graders learning, um, the metric system, and they are finding creative ways to do so well while afar. And then on the right, you can see a, a lunch bunch check-in. It's an entirely voluntary um, opportunity that I referenced last time that I had this opportunity to talk with you. And it was a day where, um, everybody was eating oranges. And so uh, our students and, and staff are finding even the smallest things to connect about where, you can see here, our, our students are showing their oranges. And then I'm gonna try something new tonight. I want to play for you a song, um, by, uh, Axel. I want to play for you a song, um, by Axel Craftnik, who is one of our staff members at South. Each week during distance learning, he writes, um, a new song for the students and the staff. And sometimes he creates, uh, all-new material. And sometimes he adapts old, uh, some old classics or... So I'm going to play for you "Breathe Easy." This was one of the very first songs that Axel wrote and played for our, uh, South community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Higgin. Welcome back, everybody. Well, I'm heading back to school, 'cause I'm nobody's fool. I've got education on my mind. One thing my mama told me to be nice and friendly, making new friends is fine. I know it's cheesy, but just breathe easy, yeah. Don't let the mask upon your face drive you crazy. Be kind, that's what it's all about. And when you spend your time here at South, make sure to cover up your mouth. Just breathe easy, yeah, 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 yeah. Sitting with my buddy Gus, riding the school bus full of South tiger pride. We had a good summer, we looked out for each other with the golden rule of blind. I know it's cheesy, but just breathe easy, yeah. Don't let the social distance between us drive you crazy. Ask questions when you can. Teachers will help you understand. And make sure to sanitize your hands. Just breathe easy, yeah, 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 yeah.
So they are finding, as you can, as you can hear, uh, some really fun, unique ways to continue to create connections, um, whether they're hybrid or apart. Um, and you can find all of Axel's, uh, features on school uh, each week if you ever want to hear the others. This next slide, uh, features our, um, the groups that I told you about last Friday, uh, or last, last time we, we met, about groups on Friday, um, where across our middle levels, um, all of our students, DLA, North, South, Kennedy, are able to join together, uh, make new friends, meet, visit with old friends who might be learning in a different model, um, and take part in different kinds of conversations. Um, so as I told you, there's a current fence and sports. And, um, uh, you can see in the middle, uh, that's Officer Gangel, who is our North School Resource Officer. Uh, she hosted Coco with a cop. Um, and, uh, just made connections with students and answered any of their questions that they might have about being a police officer or just public safety. Um, and it was exceedingly well-attended, and she was asked to come back again, um, the following weeks, which she has gladly agreed to do. Um, also, another wildly popular, um, lunch or, or Friday group was, uh, AP Sininger, who is our, our Assistant Principal at North, hosted an Among Us, uh, meet, which I'm just trying to get caught up on and try to understand what exactly, uh, that is. But apparently it's all the rage. This next slide shows you the progress that our students are making on the tech bid build. Um, despite, uh, all of, all of the situations that's happening with our pandemic, um, the bid build is happening. Um, and we actually have, uh, six students that we are allowing to come on-site, um, because the, the learning and the doing is happening outside. Our students are masked and socially-distanced. And our, uh, Inspector Drive Galvezon is able to be there along with the St. Cloud Tech folks, um, to make sure that, uh, students stay safe and healthy while they, uh, continue to, to finish this build that has begun. This next slide is a way that you'll see this, uh, at tech, and then you'll see the Apollo version as well. Um, these are some of the students of the month. Um, our teachers are, are finding ways to call out, um, the, the behaviors, um, that they're really needing to see, um, to make sure our students stay engaged and academically successful. Um, so teachers, uh, each month choose a student that is showing, um, that either making progress or, or showing the behaviors that, um, are expected and desired of them. And one of the cool things is that students are doing the same thing for tech teachers. Um, and I did not put those on here, but I can bring those next time, um, where the, the students say, uh, "This is why, uh, we love you, teacher, and these are the great things that you are doing for me." Um, so just a nice way to stay connected. At Apollo, um, we, uh, celebrated their, you can go on, Ryan, uh, celebrated their 50th anniversary. And, uh, while we were able to do that in person, uh, we still were, it overcame that obstacle and did a beautiful, um, Apollo High School 50th anniversary thanks to Tammy and, um, Ryan Underen and, uh, the communications team, and then, uh, Principal Fisher, um, and her, and a lot of our alums who, uh, were featured in the, uh, celebration. If you haven't gotten a chance to see that, I believe it's still available on our website. Uh, and then on the right-hand side, you can see, or it's my right, um, you can see, uh, the picture of the trees being replanted. Um, I know there was some concern last spring about what's going to happen to the trees that we had to move. You can see they have safely found new homes and are being, um, helping beautify Apollo, uh, as they are, were replanted on Veterans Drive. This next slide is the, uh, Apollo version of student shout-outs. Um, and you can see, uh, the teachers are saying what, um, how much they appreciate our students and what for. And then I know we also said we would talk about activities, so I'll give you a quick activities update. Um, our, our teams are playing football and volleyball, um, when they're able to be out and healthy. Um, this is a photo of, um, did the TCRC 2020 state meet. And I know you can't see me, I'm putting it in quotes, because it's not the typical state meet that you would see, but this is, um, the culminating event, uh, for our cross-country team. And, uh, featured in the middle is Sam Brewer, who placed 49th of 160 runners, um, finishing sixth place in his wave of 25 runners. And he steadily increased his pace, uh, averaging 5:05, uh, minute per mile, which is pretty astounding to me. And I'd also like to say congratulations to our Tech Boys soccer team, who won their sectional game. So we've seen, uh, again, despite, uh, the obstacles of the pandemic, there's still, um, lots of ways that our students are overcoming um, and adapting and creating new traditions and new connections. And now I will turn, uh, the update over to Superintendent Jett.
Good evening, Chair Polaris, members of the board and people out in the audience. And I, I, it's super tough for me to follow, um, uh, Principal Estrada, who's rescuing a duck, and then the South teacher, who is playing a song. Um, I'm just a superintendent, and I'm not talented like those individuals, so I will just bore you with what I'm about to talk about. And so, um, this evening, I want to discuss learning models. And first and foremost, our priority, our focus, is to have all of our students in school every day. We want and we need all of our students to return to in-person learning as soon as it is safe. And we are disappointed to see the rise in COVID-19 case rates in our communities and its impact on our schools. Next slide, please. So the why. As you may be aware, the Minnesota Department of Education and the Health, the Minnesota Departments of Education and Health recently provided school districts new direction for transitioning between learning models. We have been instructed to use multiple data points to determine our learning models rather than relying exclusively on county health data, as was initially required in the beginning of the school year. Yes, this is confusing, and the rules seem to be changing. These data points include, one, the impact of COVID-19 on counties; two, the impact on local communities; and three and four, the impacts on individual districts and school sites. Measures of COVID's impact include both health conditions and operational status in each school and district. These can include classroom teacher shortages, lack of nutritional staff, or bus drivers. As you know, the pandemic or COVID is impacting our county data and local community. Two of our counties are reporting health data above the 50 to 10,000 rate. And according to local and state health officials, these rates will continue to rise in the coming weeks. Our school district is also seeing a significant impact. As you know, we've had to close three of our elementary schools for at least 14 days due to positive cases and exposures. We continue to have daily positive cases and quarantines of both students and staff at each of our remaining school sites. Operationally, we see a significant impact on our ability to staff schools, classrooms, and buses. Single-day staff absentee rates range from a low of 7.69% to 27.89%. Substitute teachers are increasingly hard to find. And we are experiencing a shortage of bus drivers, staff, and students in quarantine. Because of these impacts on our local and school communities, we are recommending that our PK through five students begin distance learning on November 30th. Again, our priority is to have students learning in school each day. And until this is possible, until it is safe, we recognize that any changes we may create, well, we recognize any changes that we make create hardships for our students, for our families, and for our staff. Knowing this, we want to give our stakeholders as much time as possible to plan for this transition. Ryan, next slide, please. So now, what does this all mean? Distance learning for our students in grades P, PK through five will begin on November 30th. There will be no school for our stu-, those students on over, November 23rd through the 25th. As allowed by the Safe Learning Plan, staff will use November 23rd through the 25th to plan for upcoming, for the upcoming transition. Please note, there is no change for our elementary distance learning academy students. They will be in school the week of November 23rd. Again, all students in grades PK through five will begin distance learning on November 30th. Since our focus is returning all students to in-person learning, the question is, when will students return to school? The plan is for all students, PK through 12. So again, for all students, PK through 12, to return to hybrid learning on January 4th, following winter break. Just like the beginning of the school year, that would mean, PK through two will attend in-person Monday through Thursday; three through five will attend in-person on alternating days; and at the secondary level, students will attend in-person on alternating days. All students will continue to learn from home on Fridays. When we discussed this, this decision with our community health expert, Dr. George Morris, who is the Medical Lead for Centurkare's COVID Response Team and the Public Health Consultant for Stearns County School Districts, he has, he expressed support for our plan. Next slide, Ryan. Oh, you already beat me to it. Okay, thank you. As we're getting ready to transition to distance learning, we want to make clear what will be different during distance learning. Like at the secondary level, we made significant changes to our elementary distance learning model. In the spring, we had limited time to prepare for a shift to distance learning as a system. Now, we are providing three weeks' notice so our students, families, and staff can get ready for distance learning. Based on input from families and staff, we've made changes to our instruction. While we'll be using technology to deliver instruction, we will also provide hands-on learning materials to en-, enhance our instruction. Students will be provided with manipulatives, school supplies, reading materials, and workbooks prior to transitioning to distance learning. We have provided hotspots and earbuds for all families who need them and one-to-one devices for each pay to, each student. Our support staff, including our bilingual communication specialists, educational equity outreach coordinators, and paraprofessionals have been trained in CSOW and Schoology in order to provide more consistent and targeted support for our students and families. We've developed new partnerships with community organizations to support our students and families. And as you heard from Ellen earlier and her team, we are helping staff with, uh, homework help centers and family support hubs in various locations in the community. And we anticipate this increased access to instructional and technology support will greatly increase outcomes for students. And finally, we've made changes to our food service delivery model. During distance learning, we will expand the hours we deliver meals and increase access points for meal pickup and delivery. And we also are exploring the possibility of delivering packs of meals to limit the number of trips students and families need to make, especially in the winter months. Next slide. So before I open it up for questions, I'd like to reiterate two things. First, the health and safety of our learning community is our top priority. We have and will continue to make decisions that prioritize the well-being of our students, staff, and families. And second, our priority, our focus, is to have all of our students in school every day. We want and need all our students to return to in-person learning as soon as it is safe. And we appreciate this community's support in helping to make this happen. And I will open it up for questions.
Shannon, you can start us off. Do you have any questions?
Um, Willie, you said that you, in speaking with somebody from Centurkare, that he, um, showed support for this decision. I feel like maybe that word isn't strong enough. I would think that maybe he expressed appreciation and gratitude for our decision.
So Shannon, thank you for, for asking that question, for clarifying it, for helping me to elaborate on it a little bit more. Um, I'm not going to say that they gave us a standing ovation, but they were appreciative. Um, they asked, they talked, they said, "Do you need us to come to the board meeting? Would you like for us to help you with the presentation? Would you like for us to do, to speak to the community?" They were so, they endorsed it. Um, they, they, they flat-out endorsed it. Um, and, and so I think that's one of those moments where, as a school system, especially here in District 742, we're fortunate for individuals like that doctor and for, um, Centurkare, because they worked so much in collaboration with us, um, in terms of trying to do the right thing by our students and our staff and our community.
Thank you. My other question would be in getting families lunches. Um, a lot of families don't have a vehicle. Um, and I, so I've heard some stories of some struggles that, uh, while they don't have a vehicle, they're working families, they're, they're gone from certain hours. Where do they reach out and how can we solve that and help them?
So the way that I would respond to that, Shannon, they can send any of those kind of requests to me. They can send it to any executive. They can send it to their principal. Um, we are working on that. I know that Gary and, uh, the nutritional staff is working on ways to improve or to reach or to support any type of student, any family, um, in this changing times. And, as you just said, it's winter time. And, and so in terms of people walking and that transportation, it's, it's a different moment. And so that is one of the things that Gary and his staff are looking at. Um, they're looking at best practices. They're looking at models throughout the state. They're talking to other districts, surrounding districts. Um, and they're also working with our community partners to say, "Do we do it differently?" And so Gary, I may have just gave every answer, and you probably have more than I just want, what I just said. But, um, Shannon, that's the way I would go about that. I would really say if some, you know what? I say contact superintendent, of course, and the principal, of course. But to contact Gary Ganji, um, he's in charge of our executive director in terms of operations and nutritional services fall under him. Oh, wait a minute, Shannon. And I'm, I'm getting text messages. I'm getting text messages from all the execs right now. And so they're firing answers at me. And you know, so I'm multitasking. And so one of the things that I just got, thank you, folks, is we are also delivering by buses.
Right. Okay. Okay. Um, Jeff, uh, just that my ending comment here would be, um, you, thank you. We all agree that we want to be in the school building and, um, that that is our goal. Um, but thank you for looking after the safety of our students, our staff, our community. And I know it's scary being the lead and being the, you know, taking, being the first person to take this step. And, and that's hard, and it's very brave, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you for acknowledging that, Shannon. And it's, it's, people will say that I'm in the lead, but all I can tell you is there's, mm, 12 or 13 others that are on this screen that, I'm not going to say have my back, but we walk arm-in-arm. And also, as I look at the board, that's another seven. And so we walk at this, we walk together in this moment in time. But thank you for that acknowledgement.
All right, thank you, Shannon. Al, you'd be next, and then followed by Natalie. Al, do you have any questions?
No comments.
Natalie, any questions?
Um, I do, yes. Can you just talk, um, Superintendent Jett or whoever would be the right person to talk to you about how this would affect activities?
Real simple response, so I will go ahead and respond to that one. It had, it changes activities not in any way at the moment. Okay? And so, again, there's all these other directions and directives and guidance that we're receiving from the Department of Education, the Department of Health, and, uh, the Minnesota State High School League. But as we're having these conversations with them at the moment... But as we're having these conversations with them at the moment, it appears that it's not impacting activities whatsoever.
Thank you. And I just want to go with Shannon said, you know, our mission statement is to provide a safe and caring climate, and right now, unfortunately, safe means we can't be with each other during the times that you have laid out here. And so, thanks for, I know, being part of the Personnel Committee for everything that Tracy has had to do at all hours of the day and night and early morning and anyone else that is doing that same thing. It's almost, uh, it's like a job within a job within a job. So thanks for keeping my children and all of our staff and students safe and for caring about all their well-being. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Monica, you'll be next, followed by Zach.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Superintendent Willie, for this. I do have a question about, can you explain a little bit more about that endorsement from the Department and the experts in COVID? I do want to, I'm curious specifically about what do they think about a surge of cases of COVID because of the holiday season and gathering, family gatherings, which is what is happening right now, that they anticipate family gatherings or they, that are noticing the family gatherings are the first spreaders. And then this is a season for that. So I wonder about the timing for coming back in person, if that, what do they say about that?
So that's what I wanted to say, or I tried to say earlier, that we're fortunate and that they endorse it, support it. They, their terminology, and I didn't use that terminology a few minutes ago, was like a circuit breaker for a house. And so when you're talking about a circuit breaker, it's something to stop the moment. And so in terms of the holiday season, as you're expressing, Monica, you know, you have Thanksgiving where you have family gatherings, you have the holidays coming up. And so the thing that they completely recommend, the thing that they completely endorse was, A, for us to use, it's like a circuit breaker in the district in terms of us playing our part within the community. And then during the holiday season. And then we have the conversation about January 4th, or in the colleges and universities, they're talking about another two weeks after that because their students are traveling and going different places. But our community folks, our local individuals, and with the way that things seem to be happening in schools, they were there, and they were in concurrence, or they agreed with the January 4th. They recognize that we are wholeheartedly wanting our students here in person and just like a system reboot. And so our whole K through 12 system would be able to hopefully return on January 4th, just like it was in the beginning of the school year.
So just a follow-up of that, that will be following winter break, so there is no, there is no classes or anything before January 4th, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you, Monica. Zach, do you have any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions, but, you know, we get emails, concerns, we know about kids struggling because they're isolated, and just wondering, Superintendent Jett could just once again kind of reiterate how these, how and where these recommendations come from, and I, which I fully appreciate, working healthcare. This is a catch-22. We keep kids home, we isolate them, or we bring them to school and risk people dying from a virus that we still don't fully understand. So yeah, I'm just gonna ask if you could just kind of reiterate how and where that this decision comes from so people can understand how genuine this is and hard this choice is.
And so that decision comes with numerous thoughts, struggles, passion, conversations, consultation with community experts, the Department of Education, the Department of Health, and then at the executive level, at the cabinet level, just looking at each other saying, "Are you kidding?" Because our ultimate goal, our ultimate focus, our ultimate priority is we want our kids in school. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is, for anybody to think that we take this decision lightly, or that we don't agonize over coming up or coming to this conclusion, or this moment, this stopgap moment, this circuit breaker moment, I just want to make sure everybody understands, oof, nope, that's not the case. And so I just mentioned that we've had those experts, the Department of Health, the Department of Education, the commissioner, our local county folks, our local Centurkares, we're fortunate with that. With that, Zach, you talked about now, now what? So we think we've taken care of it to the best of our ability, and we're always looking to improve the way that we're going to deliver instruction, the way that we're going to connect with our students and our teachers. Our teachers want to be in buildings, our teachers want their students in front of them. That's been one of the biggest struggles. But with that being said, now comes to that part of the social-emotional part. How do you keep that connection? How do you keep those relationships? How do you, and for all of us that have kids within the system, how do you keep that going? How do you do the socialization? And our teachers are getting better at it. I mean, if you look at our staff, this is something that's new last spring. If you look at, if any of you have sat with your child, I know that I've sat with mine, I've sat in a couple of classes and watched students and staff do things differently. But earlier this evening, we had the Equity Department, and you had Lacy and Henry talking about student groups and how they're doing that differently, whether they're continuing it during the, during the hybrid moments, during distance learning. And that is something our counseling staff, I know at the secondary level, I've watched our elementary counselors, they're doing some amazing things to do it differently than last spring. And we also know that our staff has, when students have needed to come into school, so some of our buildings have still been open, or they could come in and do a drop-in, and we could do the social distancing, you saw things like that happen during the fall. And so it's this ongoing process, but our staff is wholeheartedly committed, and we're fortunate with community members or community organizations that are willing and wanting to assist us with continuing those relationships and with trying to make sure that our whole community is trying to reach young people.
You good, Zach?
Okay.
Okay. Les, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. Well, I guess that, uh, well done, well done.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Les. I just had that one question, Willie, it's probably for you or Tracy, but wrap my, I mean, fill me in on this scenario. We had the three schools go out for 14 days. In a scenario where, God forbid, another elementary school had to go out for 14 days and they were scheduled to come back three days prior to us going out anyway for Thanksgiving break, why would we bring them back for three days? What's the rationale behind that?
So Tracy, you don't have to answer this one yet unless I miss something. So Chair Polaris, I believe the day that those three schools are returning, it's that 14-day window. And so I believe the day that all three of those schools are returning is November 16th, okay? What I will say is, if all of a sudden something, what I just heard you say is, if something happened to another elementary and they had only three days left before the break, what I would do is I would place myself or place you in the shoes of that teacher, or that building, or that student, or that parent. And yes, some people would say, "Well, just keep them home for the three days." But I promise you that the staff would want those students in front of them for those three days. A, just for the teaching and learning aspect of it, or the learning and teaching aspect of it, but also what Zach just talked about, that socially-emotional, that connection, that kid connection with the adult piece to it. And then also, there's a moment in time where you're, at the elementary level, you're being able to hand off or to be able to make sure that they receive the materials that they need, the instruction that they need. It's just one more, or two more, or three more days of being able to make sure that those students have what they need, to get them more materials, to make sure that they're confident on the laptop. So there's some other, you never want to waste any days. There it is. We would never want to waste a day. And so if we can use three more days, we would use it.
Thank you for the clarification. Second question I had was, last year, we did distance learning pretty well. This year, we're doing it even better. Coming up in the holiday season, Christmas, New Year's, Thanksgiving, cold, Minnesota winters, I know we're starting to get better at the social connection with the kids. Is there thought, or is there somebody thinking outside the box to even enhance that more coming up so we get even better at it? Kind of relating to Zach's concern.
Yep. And to answer that, I would say the answer is yes. Our counseling staff, Carol Potter and her group in terms of student services, that is something that we've been thinking about since the summer, not just during the school year, not just during, as school got going, not as we just got ready to enter distance learning, but we've been thinking about that in the summertime. Because the bottom line is, we never knew what to expect. And so if you talk to any of us, we've always been talking about, if this happened, the potential of this happening, how do you perfect your craft? And I would say that Carol's group has done a wonderful job in terms of that planning. And Carol, if you want to step in, you can, but I'm just letting you know, Jeff, that is something that we put a lot of thought into. And like I said, our staff is ready for that, and we're always trying to improve.
Thank you, Willie. I'm not surprised, and I'm pleasantly happy to hear that. Carol, did you want to add anything?
Hey, Jeff, can I, before, there's one thing I'd like to say. We've always been thinking about it from the adult perspective, but one of the things that we also need to recognize is from a student perspective, they've been sharing and creating new ways to respond to this moment in time. And so they've had ideas, and they're sharing ideas with us as adults to improve our craft.
Speaking of that, Willie, improving your craft, I had a conversation with you earlier, and you were thinking, or saying that the execs and yourself think from the exec mind, and then you did something differently. Can you enlighten me?
Oh, and so when we were deliberating, agonizing, and having this discussion, you know, there's the, there's the adult way of looking at things, there's the way of, at times, people will say that as a district, we at the DAO or a principal or an administrator, we have our lens. But one of the things that you always have to take into account, why are we in education? It's about the student. It's about a young person. And so something I think that, you know, I shared with you is, we had this, that discussion as superintendent, as someone that used to be a principal, I had to stop that conversation and just walk into the buildings and walk the halls and see students and see staff and see that, be reminded of where is the teaching and learning actually happening? And just to get the vibe in the pulse of the building. And listening to teachers and hearing their heartfelt want of students to be in front of them. And it was resounding that that's what our staff wants to do. They do not ever, 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 ever want to miss that connection with the student. But there was, and so that was, there was the easy way to go about it, you know, in terms of looking from it, from that, from our lens or from our vantage point, but then there was having that conversation with students, there was that, there was that conversation of observing teachers, there was that conversation, or there was that observance of being in the building, and that's something that we wanted to make sure that we brought to the table as we were getting ready to make the decision. And it actually made it harder to make that decision because you're watching those wonderful relationships with students and staff. At the same token, it validated that you didn't want to do anything to jeopardize that. And so then we walk back into the office, and you're thinking about health and safety. You think of the mission, you're like, "You know what? What we just witnessed, what I just witnessed, I don't ever want to lose that on a permanent basis. I don't ever want to..." Yeah, you just, that's, you've got to keep that at the forefront. And so that's what went into that decision. Thanks for asking.
Thank you, Willie. Carol?
Jeff, I was just going to add that, I think we refined our process since last spring, and so we were able to develop student support teams at each of the sites. And so we're really trying to collect data and make sure that we don't have kids that are falling through the cracks, either on the social-emotional end or on the academic end as well. And so our MTSS process, we really refined that for distance learning. So we're taking a closer look at who really needs those very specific supports, and then how do we get them that very specific support? So I'm really proud of the work our team has done over the summer in really narrowing that focus and making sure that we're catching kids, that nobody falls through the cracks and everybody gets what they need.
Got it. Thanks, Carol. Looks like, Natalie, you have another question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if Superintendent Jett or another member of Cabinet could speak to, you know, what this is, means for families. I mean, it's one thing for sixth through 12th graders, right, to be home, but a whole other thing for P through 12, P through fifth to be home. So I know Superintendent Jett shared a little bit in our Personnel Committee today about, you know, thinking about timing for that and giving some time for the shift. So can we just speak to our community about the fact that we know that reality and what we are, how, what supports are in place for families?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. And I know earlier I talked about just the timing and saying that, trying to give that three-week, that two-and-a-half-week window at the elementary level, this is different than at the secondary level. At the elementary level, you're talking about childcare, you're talking about daycare, you're talking about a change to a whole family's way of operating. And so there's been much thought to that. We've worked with our, and are still working with our community partners, Boys and Girls Club, United Way, in terms of trying to figure out, like I said, the hubs in terms of learning, the learning places, hub and daycare. That's something that we gathered feedback from parents from last spring in terms of how to improve that learning model and the family's experience with that in terms of how to use technology. One of the things that came out loud and clear was, do not depend on just technology. Put something in their hands. And Lori Poste could talk to that. But it was about, you know, using manipulism, giving kids hands-on experiences. Our staff said that, but our families gave that input back to us, and now it was our jobs to respond to that. You had people talking to us about meals at the elementary level, and how do you do that differently? And if you're going to be in this for this three-week moment, are there different ways of doing meals, especially now that it's going to be winter time? Is there, we put thought into it last summer, if we were ever going to be in this moment, do you have hotspots? Do you, last spring, sometimes we only have one device in a household, but in that household, they might have two or three students in that household that needed to share that one device. And that is something that the Technology Department and with board support, that we were actually able to fund that and provide those moments, the earphones and things of that nature, to all of our students. We've also, for the families, we've been doing professional, I say professional development, almost like coursework, graduation-type courses for our parents. You heard Ellen and her team talk about our BCSSs and our, I use the term EEOC, Educational Outreach, I'm going to use the wrong word, but anyways, they have phones and they have computers to be able to communicate and to access our community and our parents, and then to be able to walk them through things. We've trained our nonlicensed staff to do things differently. So we have way more support for our families as it relates to entering this moment.
Thank you, Willie. Monica, just saw your message. Do you have a concern or question?
What, no, I did, no.
Oh, okay. I saw your typing. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Willie. Thank you, Marcia. Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Carol. We will move on to item number three. Proposed revised Board Policy 740. It deals with purchasing procedures. It's up for a first reading. It's going to be by Amy Scholarwood, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services.
Good evening, Chair Polaris, Superintendent Jett, members of the board. And I will wait for Ryan to get that brought up here. This is a fairly short board policy, and there's really only one sub, kind of substantial change that you'll see three times throughout the policy. What Board Policy 740 is, is the policy that outlines our procedures and our requirements for when the district has to go get quotes versus a sealed bid for a project or equipment. Our current board policy, as you'll see in the Section 3 for bids and quotations, has that bid threshold at $100,000. That used to be the statutory requirement for soliciting for bids. The statute actually... The statute actually increased to $175,000 quite a few years ago. I believe it was four years ago now. But our board policy has remained at that $100,000 limit. And so really what we're doing here is increasing our board policy to align with statute. One of the main reasons for that is just to allow flexibility and timing. Quite often, particularly with our long-term facilities maintenance money, as we near the end of the school year, if we have funds remaining that need to be spent, it is oftentimes, we're finding projects fall between that $100,000 and $175,000 limit. There's not a lot of projects that we can schedule that cost under $100,000 in this day and age. And so it really kind of handcuffs us to be able to spend those funds before the fiscal year reaches the end and those funds expire. So this will allow us a little bit more flexibility in getting some of those last-minute year-end projects done. So that's really the only change, the dollar amount is three times in the policy, two times on the first page, and then there's an additional reference with the dollar amount on the second page. Are there any questions on the change?
Les, we'll start off with you. Do you have any questions? No, you were at the meeting.
There, I was, yeah.
Yeah, you were there.
And it was fine. I couldn't find my button.
That's all right. Zach will be next, followed by Monica. Zach, anything? Monica, any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Natalie, you'll be followed by Al?
No, thank you, Amy.
Al, obviously, no?
No.
Okay. I also do not. Shannon, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is item number four and item number five. We're gonna merge them together because they're definitely deal with each other. It's Proposed Revised Board Policy 522, Sex Non-Discrimination Policy Title IX. It's up for a first reading and 413, Discrimination, Harassment, and Violence Policy. It's also up for a first reading. Both presentations are gonna be done by Tracy Flynn Bowe, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Good evening again, board members. Well, Amy had the very short policy and I have the privilege of a new 21-page policy. But I'm going to spare you some of the details tonight and try to provide just an overview of this policy and its relationship to both Board Policy 522 and 413 and leave you to spend some time reviewing that between now and the next reading. So just to summarize, in 2017, Secretary of Education DeVos initiated new regulations relating to Title IX. And those regulations are directed at both colleges and universities and at K-12. The new regulations required substantial and significant changes in the ways that colleges and universities and educational institutions manage sexual harassment and sexual assault complaint processes. It provided for a new definition of sexual assault and sexual harassment. Those that, particularly sexual harassment, is also defined by Minnesota Human Rights Act. It's defined in our Code of Conduct. It's defined in Title VII. And so we have another definition now of sexual harassment that's offered by the new regulations and that applies to us. And so we continue to be kind of under the, under the authority of all these various agencies, state and federal agencies related to these issues in our schools. And when we talk about sexual assault, which is also covered by the new laws, obviously there are Minnesota State Criminal Codes that apply to that as well, as well as the Clary Act, the Violence Against Women Act, and all of these different pieces of legislation that apply to the topics that are now covered under these new Title IX regulations. And so what we're required to do, and I'll just say in a nutshell, is institute a new policy that incorporates all of the new changes in the regulations that have been issued by the Federal Department of Education. That new policy has, as I said, a new definition of sexual harassment. It expands the role of the Title IX Coordinator. I think I joke about this, but in addition to being the Executive Director of Human Resources, I'm also the Human Rights Officer, the Title IX Officer, the Data Practices Officer. And so I was delighted to know that my role is expanding quite significantly under these new regulations. I did consult legal counsel though, and I can name Assistant Coordinator. So I'm looking into that quickly. So that role has changed really significantly, particularly in its impact with students. The Title IX regulations apply to both students and staff behaviors. And so if a staff member was accused of sexual harassment or sexual assault, I would have been directly involved in the investigation and the complaint processes related to that. So that shift isn't as substantial. But all of a student behavior is managed in each school by school administrators under the Code of Conduct and our regular behavior management system. And all of that now has to be touched by the Title IX Coordinator as well. Thus, my need for assistance. We'll come to that later. The procedures require very formal report processes and then investigation processes. They change the notice requirements that have to go to the students that might be alleged to have engaged in behaviors that might be defined as sexual harassment or sexual assault. The regulations adopted, what we call as lawyers, the Gepser Davis standard for defining when a school district is liable for sexual harassment, which is good news. That standard that's been codified in two significant Supreme Court cases says that school districts will be liable for failing to respond if they had actual notice of the sexual harassment and engaged in deliberate indifference to the sexual harassment. And so it's a very high bar for school districts to be held liable by the OCR or by the Department of Education. But nonetheless, we are required to institute all of these new regulations and complaint procedures. The new regulations require us to respond to any complaint or report of sexual harassment or sexual assault that is known to any employee. In the old definition, the only time we had that direct obligation as a school district to respond is if a person is aware of the sexual harassment. The new regulations say any employee is notified or has notice. So it doesn't matter if it was a paraprofessional or the superintendent. Any employee that has notice of actual notice or is notified about sexual harassment behavior has to report that and we have an obligation to respond. It requires an immediate intervention with the reporting student. And I'm gonna talk about students, although the same concepts apply to adults. And again, adults are just a little easier to manage because that's more like what we've been doing. But with students, the Title IX Officer is required to engage with the student immediately to offer supports and then to talk about the formal complaint process. The student has to make a decision whether to engage in a formal complaint or not. We would presume that since they're minors, very often that's gonna be done in consultation with their parents. And if a student and/or parent decide not to, the Title IX Coordinator may sign a formal complaint as well. There's processes for investigation, for report writing, for decision-making, for appeals. And I'm gonna give you a quick overview of all of that quickly. But those are all of the kinds of things that are in these new Title IX procedures and in the 21-page policy and procedure document that is in the materials tonight. There are, as I suggested, there's more players that have to be engaged in the process. The Title IX Coordinator plays kind of the pivotal role in terms of shepherding the process for the school district, but cannot play any of the other roles. So historically, as Title IX Officer, especially as it related to employees and any serious cases related to students, I might also have participated in the investigation and the decision-making process. Now all of those roles have to be separated. And so in addition to a Title IX Coordinator, we need to have trained investigators, trained decision-makers, trained appeal officers, informal resolution facilitators, and students and parties are entitled now to have advisors in the process. And we'll talk more about that. So there's a whole collection of new people that need to get trained and ready to support these new procedures. So rather than go through the 22-page policy, this 522 went from a three paragraph policy to a 22-page policy. The only thing I will tell you about it is that we reviewed that in consultation with our outside legal counsel. And they recommended, and I agreed, that lots of what was in the MSBA model policy that has been recently issued was a combination of both policy language and procedure language. And as you know, we've been trying to separate those things in our policies because of the cumbersome nature of making policy changes, the three reading requirements. And so with the help of the outside legal counsel, we've split the MSBA policy into policy and then an addendum for the procedures. As we all know, as practitioners in these very new complicated regulations, we may need the flexibility to be able to amend our procedures to make them work better for schools. Frankly, this work was really directed at colleges and universities, but then K-12, they said it applies to K-12 as well. And so the procedures are very cumbersome compared to what we're typically doing in a K-12 behavior environment. So I think the easiest way to go through this for you and to give you a good overview is I created a process map of a Title IX complaint. And Ryan, if you will display that, I think that will be easier than going through the policies, paragraph by paragraph. So as that's coming up, the first step in the Title IX complaint you'll see is the report. And the report, again, is any time an employee of the school district receives information regarding behavior that could be sexual harassment or sexual assault. And so in general, as we define that, you know, in the broadest terms, it's sex-based behavior that's objectionably offensive and unwelcome to the complaining party. When that report comes in, however it comes in, the Title IX Coordinator needs to be notified. The procedures require the Title IX Officer to meet with the student, offer supportive measures. Supportive measures could be anything from schedule changes to counseling to, you know, any other number of things that might be helpful to support the complainant in that initial part of the process. The Title IX Coordinator also has to then explain the formal complaint process in detail to the student and determine whether or not the student wants to move forward with a formal complaint. If the student wants to proceed, then they would have to fill out a formal complaint. So again, this is very different from when there might be a behavior referral and the student may come to the office to talk to one of our administrators about a behavior. And the administrator then would take it upon themselves to investigate and manage that behavior. Now the student has to affirmatively sign a formal written complaint to start the procedures. If they do not want to file a formal complaint, then the process stops there. And then the behavior, which might still violate our Code of Conduct, might still violate the Minnesota Human Rights Act, would be referred back to the administrators and they would follow their usual procedures around dealing with student behavior. And so I will say, the good news is that probably most of the behaviors that we typically deal with in this area will continue to be managed by administrators who are really good at handling those cases in fair ways with kids in their schools. But this complaint process is really directed at the most serious kinds of behaviors in schools. And we'll get to that in just a minute as we talk about the definition. If you had a very serious case of behavior and a student did not wish to proceed with a formal complaint, the Title IX Officer can sign the formal complaint and move forward to investigate and manage that complaint process on behalf of the district. So that is the first, the report, initial response. Then we move into the formal complaint. If a student wanted to move forward with that formal complaint, then a written notice has to go out to both parties. And the new regulations use the terms complainant to talk about the student that would be the victim or the recipient of the unwelcome conduct and the term respondent to describe the responding student or the alleged perpetrator of the conduct. So both the respondent and the complainant would have to be notified about the complaint. The allegations would have to be specifically and specifically described, including the names of the parties, the conduct being complained of, the dates, locations, those kinds of things. There has to be a specific statement to the parties that says that the respondent is presumed not to be responsible for the conduct until there'd be a formal determination of responsibility. The parties get to be notified that they each have a right to an advisor of their choice. And very different from typical school behavior cases, they have the right to have an attorney if that's their choice. There's a very clearly defined role for that advisor that doesn't look like an attorney in the process, but they could have an attorney as an advisor. They have, they get notified that they will have the right to inspect and review all evidence that's gathered. There's a warning against any false statements or filing of false information. And they're provided with a copy of Board Policy 522 and the procedures. The next step of the process is the school district is required to engage in a risk assessment where they have to determine whether or not the offending party, the respondent, can safely remain in the school environment while the investigation is underway. That's an important assessment because of the timelines that you'll see as we go through the complaint process are specific and significant. It could take, even a very efficient and fast-moving complaint process could take a minimum of 60 days to get through. Where typically, if we had very serious behavior of this nature, we might be able to investigate and process that complaint within a week or two. Now we could be looking at 60 days if there were any potentially criminal behavior, like a sexual assault kind of behavior, and law enforcement were involved. It could take much longer than that. So the tricky bit of this, when we talk about student behavior, is that the complaint process could take 60 days to 120 days in really complicated cases. And during that time, you can't do anything disciplinary to the respondent. And you have to make sure you're providing education during that time. And so there could be the decision to remove the student from the school environment. The lawyers are very concerned about what that means in terms of sped students and whether or not that violates FAP and constitutes a change of placement. And all of those things will have to be worked out by lawyers as we go. But those are the things that have to be considered. If it were an employee, that was the responding party, we can certainly put an employee on paid administrative leave during the pendency of an interview if we thought that the risk assessment required that. But we'd have to make that assessment at the front end of the process. In appropriate cases, the next step says informal resolution. The school district would have the option for an informal resolution process, which might look like a mediation process or something of that sort. Both parties would have to agree to that. It has to be entirely voluntary. They can withdraw from that process at any time before the mediation or their resolution would be completed and move back into the formal complaint process. Okay, so moving on to page two. See, we're only gonna do two pages instead of 22. So although this seems long, I'm sparing you a lot of the details. The next part is about mandatory dismissal. Once the formal complaint process now has been noticed and all the parties have been advised of their rights under the process, the Title IX Coordinator is required to make a judgment about whether or not the case must be dismissed, mandatorily dismissed. A case has to be dismissed if it would not meet the definition of sexual harassment, even if proven. And so this is what lawyers refer to as kind of a summary judgment motion. If you took all of the facts that are being alleged by the complaining party and you assume that they are true, the question that you must ask is, would that meet the definition of sexual harassment under Title IX? If you find that it would not meet the definition of sexual harassment, then it must be dismissed. You've got to give written notice to all the parties of that dismissal and a rationale for the dismissal. And then again, nothing would prevent us from dealing with the conduct complained of. It may not rise to the level of this new Title IX definition of sexual harassment, but the conduct complained of could still be managed under our student discipline process and under our Code of Conduct. The report also has to be dismissed if it did not occur on school districts and the school district's education program or activity. And so there's always that really tricky judgment to be made if the behavior occurs off of school grounds or if it were to occur in the virtual world, we'd have to make that judgment about whether or not the behavior was inside the control of the school district or somehow related to the educational program or activities. There's also permissive dismissal. If we find that the student that is being complained about has left the school district, for instance, we could dismiss the complaint. If there's anything that prevents us from effectively gathering the facts related to the complaint, it can be dismissed. But you have to make this judgment about whether But you have to make this judgment about whether or not dismissal is required again at this front end. Assuming that it is not dismissed, it moves forward. I will just spend a minute talking about this next box, which says the definition of sexual harassment. So for purposes of Title IX, as I said earlier, we have a definition of sexual harassment in our code of conduct. We have a definition currently in Board Policy 413, which is our harassment policy. And there is a definition in the Minnesota Human Rights Act, which is also applies to schools. And then there's lots of case law and Title VII and other sorts of definitions that we work with as we think about these kinds of behaviors in schools. But as we think about this new definition, there are three kinds of behaviors that can be subjected to this procedure. The first is quid pro quo sexual harassment. Quid pro quo sexual harassment by its very definition has to be an employee engaging in the harassment, because it presumes that an employee in a position of power is using their position of authority against a student to leverage that inappropriate sexual conduct. So that is covered by the policy. Second, and probably most significant in terms of thinking about the behaviors that we manage on a regular basis with students is hostile environment harassment. And that is defined under the new regulations as unwelcome conduct. So the complainant has to say that the behavior is unwelcome. That is determined by a reasonable person standard. And, and here's the third and important bullet, to be so severe, pervasive, and objectionably offensive, that it effectively denies access to the educational program or activity. Now, the significant thing about that bullet and that definition is that it's quite a higher standard than the other definitions that I've talked about. In the, in the 413 policy, in our code of conduct, in the Minnesota Human Rights Act, those words are separated by ors and not ands. So under the Minnesota Human Rights Act, we typically talk about behavior that is severe or persistent or pervasive or so objectionably offensive. Now you see that those are all ands, and so again, you're hitting a very high bar. And so behavior that might typically be reported under our code of conduct in a middle school hallway where a, a student would say something in the hallway would not likely rise to this level of the definition and would have been mandatorily dismissed even if a student wanted to make a formal complaint about it at the earlier step. When it comes to the third kind of behavior that's covered by the regulations are sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence, or stalking, as defined by state and federal law. Again, very serious kinds of complaints, and those would typically involve law enforcement and the policy provides for us to notify law enforcement in those cases when it's appropriate. Okay, so now we've gotten through all of that, it's time to start the investigation. The investigation now requires another written notice to the parties before you would do any interviews. Anyone that's invited for an interview has to receive a written invitation to that interview with sufficient time to prepare for the interview and to have their advisors present. There's a limitation on, there are very specific, you know, limitations on evidence that can be presented or, or sought during those investigation meetings that I won't go through. Both sides have to have an equal opportunity to present evidence and witnesses. So typically in these cases, an investigator would determine the scope of the investigation. But now the, either party could propose witnesses or evidence that had to be examined. That evidence has to all be collected, and once it's all collected, including witness statements and all of it, has to be provided to both parties with 10 days for the parties to review and respond in writing to the evidence. Once that is completed, there's an investigative report that is drafted by the investigator, and that has to provide a summary of the evidence and judgments about the credibility of witnesses and so on. That written report then has to be provided to both parties, and they have 10 days again to review and respond to the report. The report is then moved forward to the next person on the chain, and that is the decision maker. The decision maker now has to offer each of the parties the opportunity to submit written questions for the other to answer. At the college level, this is, there is actually a, a, an in-person hearing that has to take place with the right of cross-examination. At the K-12 level, it's the right to submit written questions that either party would be required to answer. So there's that submission of written questions, the opportunity to answer those, any limited follow-up questions are, are allowed for as well. And then the decision maker takes into account all of the evidence, the investigation report, and whatever is discovered in those written questions, and now has to make a judgment about whether or not the behavior violates the policy. The standard of evidence that is used is the preponderance of the evidence standard, meaning that the, the decision maker would have to decide that the evidence offered proves that it's more likely than not to be true. If they make that finding, they have to write a decision summarizing their findings, the allegations, all the procedures that have been gone through, their findings of fact, applying the code of conduct or any of our rules to the, to the behavior and so on, and propose any remedies that would be appropriate. And so this is the first time in the process, and we may be about 45 days in by this point, that anyone can talk if the, if the student respondent is found to be responsible for the behavior. This is the first time we get to talk about consequencing the student by making these recommended remedies. That gets then distributed to the parties, that decision. There is a five-day opportunity to appeal the decision. If there's an appeal, it goes to the appeal officer. Each of the parties has the right to submit written information to the appeal officer, and the appeal agent has to make a determination whether the student is held responsible for the behavior or whether the complaint will be dismissed. So that is a very summary overview, believe it or not, of the, of the 21-page, by Board Policy 522 and those procedures. And so my recommendation is that between now and the second reading, the board take the time to read through the policy and procedures, and we could have a more robust discussion and questions and answers at that time. With respect to Board Policy 413, the changes to that that you'll note are just adding a reference at the front of that policy that says that there are overlapping laws. And so while 413 used to be where we housed all of the definitions of sexual harassment, the policy now says, because there's multiple and overlapping laws regarding sexual harassment, those are now subject to Board Policy 522 and strict options of sexual harassment and sexual violence from Board Policy 413, because that will be now in Board Policy 522. So I think that is all the information I have to share with you tonight about those policy changes, but I'm happy to take any questions that people might have.
All right, we'll start off with Les. Do you have anything you want to ask tonight or hold for the next meeting?
Just a point that, that Tracy did not make, we had this in personnel this morning. This is a new federal law. We don't have a great deal of option. And even if the board decided it didn't like it, our staff would have to have a, a procedure in place to do this anyway. So we need to keep that in mind as we move forward.
Thank you, Les. Let me just say, because I, I missed that, the, the procedures went into effect on August 14th of 2020. There were, there were, I think, five or six federal lawsuits filed against the Department of Education over the summer, asking them to please delay implementation of these new, very detailed grievance procedures in the midst of COVID-19 as schools were dealing with their own kind of crises right now. And all of those cases were failed. And so this is the law of the land. We're required to have a policy, we're required to have training for all of our administrative staff. That's going to take place this Friday. We have a three-hour training scheduled with our outside legal counsel, and myself will be providing that for all of our administrative staff. We're required to treat any, even if, even before the policy gets formally approved by the board, if any serious cases of harassment or assault were to come through, we would have to use these grievance procedures that are required by the new federal regulations at this time. And failure to follow the federal law, as you say, Dr. Green, would be, would be a violation of the law and could subject us to investigation and consequencing by the OCR, Office of Civil Rights.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Les. Zach, do you have any questions tonight? Monica?
Yeah, of course, I always have questions. So this thing is very long, hard, confused, and I understand that there are two pieces of it, which is a procedural part and a policy part. And we are in the first reading of I am not sure what. So, yeah.
Board Policy 522, and attached to it is the addendum to Board Policy 422, 522, which is the procedures. So the 21-page document that's in the materials is a combination of both the policy language and the addendum with the procedures.
So, okay, so are we, all right. Do we need to approve the procedures? Do we need to approve all these things together or just the policy part?
You need to approve the policy.
So the procedures are given, the procedures, you're going to have them for the administration, and you're giving this to us for context. But the part where we can look at language and that we can look at suggestions is only the part of the, of the policy, is that correct?
Correct. And the, the procedures aren't really optional for us either, because they really have been, they are, they are straight out of the regulations. So ordinarily, we can, we have a lot of flexibility with our procedures under a policy. We don't have that flexibility with these procedures. And they're required by the regulations to be published together with the policy. And so that's why they're joined in this document together.
Okay, thank you. So Tracy, one question that I have about this, that might not be relevant, or maybe it is. So one thing is that I understand that there is a part of the law that mandated us to do some things. But as you explained at the beginning of your explanation, you were saying that sexual harassment, for example, is explained by different entities in the state, at the state. And so there are several entities, some of them regulatory, some of them are not, that explain sexual harassment and sexual assault, and that we have to adhere to all of them. So one thing that I'm not clear is, is how that all together works in our district. So it becomes really confusing about what are the, for me to understand, what are the options that, that the staff have, or what are the actions that are happening, and what are the options that victims of sexual harassment or sexual assault may have, if this is a separate policy that encompasses only the federal mandate? And, and I wanted to understand how the whole thing and all the mechanisms and the, and the policies that we already have maybe trump each other? So that, that's kind of one thing that I don't know, don't understand, and I'm not sure that is what it goes into this or not. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
I, I can certainly try. I can tell you that I've been in, in meetings all summer long, and I'm on a, I'm on a listserv with the Council of School Attorneys from across the country. And they literally are having two-hour meetings every single week as lawyers try to puzzle through how, from state to state to state, these federal regulations impact state law, special ed law, and all of the other regulations that we follow as school, as K-12 schools. So I don't have good answers, because there aren't any yet. I think we're all going to work that out as we go. But I think that what, what caused me not to lose quite as much sleep at night is when it became clear that this definition was targeted at the most serious kinds of cases of sexual harassment and sexual assault, and thus the very formal complaint procedures. But if something doesn't rise to that level, or a complainant doesn't want to file a formal complaint, we still have the obligation to address the behavior under state bullying laws, under the Minnesota Human Rights Act, and under our own codes of conduct. We would just be relieved of these very formal grievance procedures and be able to manage that conduct and evaluate it under our code of conduct and under our behavior practices as we always have. So, so it's like it's the top tier in terms of the formality of the procedures, but underneath it said everything we've always done around sexually harassment behavior or behavior that creates an unwelcome environment for students inside our schools. It does, from my perspective, it doesn't lower the threshold for how we're going to take care of students in our schools. It just at the very highest level of offensive conduct, it requires us to use a very formalized process.
Okay, so is that, when, when we look at the policy and the organization of the policies in the book, I am, I am concerned that families that are looking for some mechanisms are going to find everything together. So, and that's why I'm saying, okay, this might not be pertinent to this specific conversation about approving this policy, but it, but it is pertinent to me, because we are making those mechanisms available to families. And, and how do I know if my concern rises to the top or not? If I have a concern?
Right. So the, the code of conduct still describes the behaviors that are part of sexual harassment or gender harassment or racial harassment. We still have our bullying policy, we still have our harassment policy. So all of that is still in our code of conduct, and so we can respond to those behaviors. What is still not, I think, completely clear to lawyers is, for those lower-level behaviors. So say you're in middle school, we know from our data that we get about 100 cases a year, let's say, 100 behavior referrals a year that fall into this area of sexual harassment. And the peak of those happens at middle school, because that's the developmental age when students are, you know, struggling with how to have appropriate behaviors with each other. And so if we think about middle school behaviors, and I get to review all of those every year, some of them are, you know, a quick comment in the hall to a girl that's inappropriate, but probably didn't distract her for more than the next three minutes, and she goes on to her class. Now, we're going to grab that behavior under our code of conduct, and we're going to say, that's not okay, you can't do that in school, and the student may be consequence for that. What's not clear to lawyers right now is, do we really have to run all of those behaviors? Do we have to grab that, that female student out of the hallway and say, sit her down and talk to her about this formal complaint process in that case, so that we can rule it out as a, as a Title IX offense? And then go about our business handling the case? Some lawyers are suggesting that you should manage your complaint process in schools like you always have, unless you get a case that you identify as being at this high level, and then you would notify the student about the Title IX procedures and, and follow these grievance procedures. I can't tell you that lawyers have puzzled that all out yet. It, it depends on which lawyer you ask. And I, I think we're all trying to watch and wonder how this is going to work in schools. But I think that for the most part, if I think we have 100 cases of sexual harassment a year, behavior offenses that are reported, I would say that a handful, as I look at the 100 that we had in the last year, a handful would hit the level where we'd have to do this kind of a formal process. And so, I mean, I think that's the good news, but we all have to be prepared to make sense of how we filter out the behaviors that don't really belong under these really rigorous procedures. And that's the piece that I think we'll have to work with our outside legal counsel and make sense of, along with everybody else in the country.
So I just wanted to close my comments, but thank you very much, Tracy. This thing is really hard, confusing, and you have mentioned that there are lawyers that actually have to look at this. And I don't know how are you doing all this in the middle of preparing for COVID and looking at other people in trace, in, in case tracings and looking for their stuff and figuring out who is at home and who's not at home? So I'm really amazed and thankful for what you're doing and really, really appreciative of this. And yes, I'm, I'm sorry that you actually have to do that in these times.
Thank you. Ryan Cox likes to say sleep is for quitters, so.
All right, we will jump on to the next person so we can get home tonight. Natalie, do you have any questions?
I've heard this presentation twice today. Zero questions, and Tracy knows all my wonderful thoughts about it, that you probably call Amanda, so I'm saying nothing more right now.
All right, that's you, you, Monica, and Les are on that committee, correct? All right. Al, anything?
I heard it before too, so I don't have any additional questions.
Shannon, anything?
I have also heard this lengthy conversation here. But Tracy, can you please reiterate the fact that what the district's obligation is and practice would be to report any concerns to law enforcement besides doing this, our own internal investigation? What, how would we handle that?
Right. The policy explicitly says that in the case of behavior that could be criminal in the sexual assault realm, that we would report, and, and it's permissive, right? It says the district may report that to law enforcement. It says the district may report that to law enforcement. We have other policies similar to that. It's not mandatory that we make that report. I will just say that we always make that report. And I think the permissive language is there in the regulations because there are certainly still some victims' rights kinds of things where we would like to give victims some control over their involvement with law enforcement. And so the policy provides for that report to law enforcement.
Thank you. That's it.
I have no questions either, Tracy, being that I work in law enforcement. I'm unfortunately familiar with this. Thank you for a nice presentation. I want to say congratulations to Monica Kusur-Schwarz, Shannon Hawes, Al Dahlgren for their reelection to the board and look forward to welcoming the new board member, Scott Andreessen, for 2021. The time is 9:02. Our work session is adjourned. Good night and stay safe.